Can I have your attention, please? We'll be starting up shortly. Good evening and welcome to the Lowell Planning Board for November 18th, 2019. We have approval for minutes for November 4th. Anybody have any questions for those? Do we have the November 4th ones, right?
Yes, yes, yeah.
I know Jared did a very good job. They're pretty lengthy.
Did a great job.
Anybody have any questions on those?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve a minutes as submitted. Just to note, there were 12 pages of minutes. You did a great job.
I'll second the motion.
Motion is made and seconded. Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion carried. Okay, moving along on the agenda. The first matter on the agenda, we have a special permit for, excuse me, 20 Thorncliff Ave. Originally, this matter was back before us on September 15th and was continued multiple times due to the fact that we need a four-member quorum for the special permit. So this time, the matter is going to be requested to be further continued to December 2nd. I'll make a motion that we continue to December 2nd. Do we have a, anyone want to second that motion?
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I understand.
Okay, so, Carrie's three in favor, none against. So that matter will be continued to 12/219 for a special permit on 20 Thorncliff Ave. Also on the agenda tonight, I see that we've had a request for continuance for 116 and 128 Fletcher Street. May we hear from 116, 128 Fletcher Street, please?
Good afternoon, Chairman and members of the board. Yes, we're here to request a continuance to the next meeting to gather the proper paperwork required by our previous planning board meeting.
Thank you. Any of the board have any questions or comment?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion now, just ask the applicant, though, would the next meeting of December 2nd work for you? Is that...
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I'd make a motion to continue the matter to the December 2nd meeting.
I'll start on the motion.
Yeah. Motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Therefore, the matter votes carry. That's continued to December 2nd.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. Good luck. Moving back on the agenda, so the next matter we have is 705 Dutton Street. This matter was before us in a previous meeting. It was continued to tonight's meeting for the applicant to provide further information to the board. So this is a site plan review for 705 Dutton Street. An application was submitted by Grow Team Gardens, GTG LLC, seeking site plan review approval to open a marijuana cultivation facility at the above address. The building is in the light industrial zoning district and needs site plan review, approval under Section 11.4, Section 10, and other relief that may be required. This matter was continued as indicated from my meeting back in the end of October 21st. And we hear from the applicant, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Attorney Joseph Clermont, representing Grow Team Gardens LLC. President of Grow Team Gardens, Dan Landry, is with me tonight, and also the architect, Will Ebertson. He's setting up a couple of the boards for us. As you may recall, the applicant is seeking a site plan review for a marijuana cultivation facility at 705 Dutton Street. He's looking to locate the facility within the existing building, and he would build an enclosed cultivation and production facility. Essentially, would be building a building within the building. The property is owned by Kazangian Enterprises, Inc., and would be leased by the applicant. Now, at our last meeting, there was some confusion regarding use of the site by the owner, Kazangian Enterprises. So after our last meeting, the applicant and I met with Mr. Kazangian at the site to attempt to clarify the use of the site. Now regarding the businesses that are located there now, Kazangian Enterprises conducted a scrap metal business. You recall there was a scale on the site that was level with the ground. That was utilized by him for the scrap metal business. In addition, there was another business in the building, Arctic Sprinkler's Fire Prevention, which also conducted business there. Now, if this site plan is approved, Kazangian would cease operations at the site. He would remove all his scrap metal debris cars from the site, and Arctic Sprinkler would also vacate. The applicant, Grow Team Gardens, would occupy the entire building. Now, Kazangian Enterprises does wish to continue using the site for access to his abutting properties to store vehicles he has towed. None of the towed vehicles will be stored on the subject property, but he wants an easement to be able to tow across the parking lot to get to his back lot. Kazangian would also like to park three commercial vehicles in the rear of the property bordering Cushing Street, and one commercial vehicle in the back of the building behind the existing security fence. Now, there are residential dwellings located to the right of the lot behind the chain link fence, and, excuse me, where the security fences... May I approach the drawing, Mr. Chairman? Thank you. Where the chain link fence is right here, and there's residential dwellings located right here. Mr. Kazangian at times parked commercial vehicles and tow trucks there, some here, and one behind the building. What he would like to do is to not park any commercial vehicles here, park three tow trucks in the back over here on the right side, and park one tow truck behind the building right here, and leave access open for him to tow cars over to this area that's owned by him, where the cows remain until they're picked up. This scale that's on the drawing would not be used. It's level with the ground, so it wouldn't be, it would not be in use. Now, these residential properties on Wamsett Court are all in the industrial zone, and in deference to the residential homes, Mr. Kazangian has agreed not to park any commercial vehicles along the chain link fence from Dutton Street to the end of his building. There are some residential cars that are parked here, but those cars are not part of Kazangian. They are from the property at 4 Wamsett Court, and apparently, when Wamsett Court was being constructed, there was a condition of the planning board that he provide for parking along that area. So there are some cars that are parked there. It's my understanding it was part of the conditions that they remain. He would like for the residential cars, up to four cars, to be able to be parked along Only cars and SUVs belonging to the occupants of the resident at 4 Wamsett Court were continued to be allowed to park along the fence. As I said, apparently, this was a condition when Wamsett Court, 4 Wamsett Court was being developed. Kazangian Enterprises agreed not to tow cars across the parking lot after 5:00 p.m. unless a snow emergency exists in the city of Lowell. So that's in deference to the residential properties that are there. I understand the neighbors don't like the fact when the cars are being towed after 5:00 p.m., he's agreed and signed a lease modification that he wouldn't tow cars after 5:00 p.m. unless there was a snow emergency in the city. Now, it's the intent of the applicant to clean the site and provide a very professional operation, and since it's cultivation only and no customers come to the site, the use would be much less intensive than what currently exists. Unfortunately, we just received the swept pass analysis prior to this hearing. I understand the board hasn't had a chance to look at it. DPD hasn't had a chance to look at it, the fire department, or traffic engineer. So the issue I see in the swept pass analysis is that he's got fire trucks coming in here, accessing the back, and doing a three-point turn approximately where those trucks are located. That creates a problem for us. So I'm going to be requesting some more time to have the engineer take another look at this, because that swept pass analysis doesn't work, in my opinion, with the three trucks that Mr. Kazangian wants to park there. I spoke to the engineer briefly tonight when I got the analysis to determine if there's some opportunity to have that swept path be somewhere other than there. He's going to take a look at that. The other option is if we can convince Mr. Kazangian not to park any trucks there. So that's an open issue in my mind. I'm going to request some more time to examine that so that the board can examine it, and DPD and fire department as well. But other than that, I think we've resolved the other issues that were brought up at the last meeting, and certainly we'll be available to answer any questions, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
Probably 30 days, because even though you like to think it could be done in two weeks, these things don't move as quickly as you would like with the people that have to look at it, so I would request 30 days.
We have the one meeting in December, which is December 2nd, and then we have our first meeting in January, which will be January 6th. Would January 6th be sufficient?
Let me ask my client.
Sure.
Is January 6th... Two weeks, two weeks from now or January 6th? You're ambitious. If we can get it on for two weeks, we'll do our best to get the information before the board.
Okay. Okay, well, here, let me think if anybody else wants to be here this evening, so that we might as well hear what else we have on. Anybody here this evening want to speak in regards to this project?
Donald Sterling, at Wamsett Court.
Shirley Blanchard, at Wamsett Court. I know, he keeps talking about three trucks in there. Right now, there are four, five, six, seven. There are actually seven Kazangian tow trucks and dumpster trucks parked in there now. So where all these trucks are going to go afterwards, I have no idea. If he's saying he, how is this building going to be secured with a locking gate if it's going to be constantly open for Kazangian's trucks to go in and out, and the tenants that live behind him to go in and out?
And as well as the people whose cars have been towed, coming and looking for their cars, coming in and out, blocking our driveway, blocking the entrance to their property. You know, Grow Team's Gardens doesn't even understand what they're getting themselves into with Mr. Kazangian's activities on Dutton Street. He has multiple businesses in these buildings. You know, he goes in and applies for a license, gives an address, and then he's right back there a month later getting another license at the same address. And this has been an ongoing issue down there with all these heavy trucks and everything. I mean, we're going to continually oppose this if Mr. Kazangian's going to use that property to tow cars into. I mean, just ending at 5:00 isn't going to resolve the issues. That's when the issues occur the most, at 5:00. Never mind the middle of the night.
Yeah, because we've complained about, I've asked what his hours of operation was when he applied for his license, and I was told 8 to 5. Well, then that turned into 24-hour towing, so we got ramp trucks backing in at 2:00, 3:00, 4:00 in the morning.
And we were told everything was going to be indoors at this property when he first applied for a license there, and that was a lie right from the get-go. I mean, it's been a constant lie. There's never been a scrap metal business at this property. It was a front for the police towing and other activities. I mean, you've got people coming in and using his dumpster in the back every time Dick and Harry comes in there and uses that dumpster. Who knows what they're throwing in it? And we've complained to the police department, building department, they just keep passing it back and forth between one another, and it just doesn't seem to end for us. So we'll be back, I guess, in two weeks and...
I'll make a motion that we continue the matter to December 2nd. That's the date, right?
Yes, December 2nd, yes.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. Call in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So we'll see you in a couple of weeks. Thank you, counsel. Good luck. Thank you very much for coming down. Okay, moving along on the agenda, we have a pre-application site plan review and special permit, 113 Walker Street. J.J. and Milty Trust has requested the planning board provide a preliminary review of their proposed project at the address listed above. This is not a public hearing. The planning board will render no decision related to the site plan or special permit nor guarantee any future decision, whether positive or negative, on any project that receives a pre-application review. The applicant has committed plans for proposed nine-unit residential development at the above address. The existing structure is a two-family home on 37,036 square foot lot located in the traditional multi-zoning district. The applicant proposed to subdivide the lot and construct four townhouses on Lot A and five townhouses on Lot B. This is the second pre-app for the same requested address. And we hear from the applicant, please.
Chairman, I have a few things I'm going to hand out. One is a street view.
Yes, if you state your name for the record, please, sir?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
The microphone.
Good evening, Chairman. For the record, my name is Matt Hammer with Lamplex Engineering, 10 George Street, Lowell. So I just wanted to refamiliarize everyone with the subject property itself. It's here at 113 Walker Street. This is the existing two-family on, at 113 Walker Street, and the parcel consists of 36,841 square feet. Our intention is to subdivide the existing parcel into two lots. If you recall, we had a concept plan which showed a townhouse development with one access coming up through the center with townhouses on either side. I have that plan with you. I just wanted to show that to you, just to familiarize yourself with that proposal, and that was this plan here. I know it wasn't preferred. We were looking for something that would be more in line with what would represent a streetscape showing two individual units on the roadway, which is what our new plan does. If you notice on that aerial, or that street view, there's a lot of duplexes along the existing roadway that come right up towards the street. And that street view that I handed out shows that. Most of the houses are right up on the street, duplexes, small porches out in front of the So we wanted to show initially a development that would have two separate access drives to show how you could access both of the lots with separate access drives, and that's what this plan here represents. There would be identical duplexes on each individual lot facing the street with front porches, walkways, coming off of the existing sidewalk into each of the units. One of the comments was to expand the porch there, and we most certainly could do that on the front of each of the units. That's an easy thing to do. This shows an individual driveway here, coming in here to some parking, and then there would be an additional duplex on the rear of this property. Conversely, on the other lot next to it, would have a separate access drive, and then this one, the density allows it to be five units, and then we have a triplex unit in the rear. One of the comments was from the fire department that that rear unit would need to be sprinkled, we understand that, and that most certainly would be the case. So this streetscape with the new rendering here would show the unit here, and the other would be identical, and we would expand on the porch configuration of these units. And then this would fall in line generally with the streetscape I show on that street view. And I know one of the concerns was to make sure we have individual front doors facing the street, and that's what this building allows us to do there. Then what we wanted to do is show with the same configuration, to show what it would be if we wanted to do a common drive in the center, which was mentioned in the fire department's comments, would be preferred from the fire department's standpoint, would be to do this common drive here. And then it would be the same configuration of the units. It would be less overall pavement. It would remove one of the two curb cuts to the street, which would allow more on-street parking for the other folks that live on Walker Street. And then this entire common drive in the entire development with the two separate lots would be tied together with a common maintenance agreement, so that, so both parcels would be maintained identically so that they don't, one parcel doesn't look differently than the other by it being maintained by one contiguous homeowners' association. And then we're just, we're fine, too, to just do the two separate access drives here as well. We have no problem doing that way. It's just whatever the preference of the board would be. I just wanted to make note that it was mentioned or noticed by the fire department that the one access drive would be preferred from their standpoint. And then all of the comments that were mentioned in the DPD letter, we're acknowledging. We know we're going to be doing some landscaping, some screening. We're going to add a couple more parking spots to this configuration, which we can do, and we're really looking for the board's input on whether this scenario is preferred from the other scenario that we showed.
I would have to say, based on the documentation, I believe, that the single access driveway would be preferable.
This one, the other one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just, I mean, the fire department.
Yep, and I have...
And it looks like it should work better with different access.
Yes, I have a pocket of that, maybe here with me, too, if anyone wants to see that. I also have an aerial of the site. It shows that this is the subject parcel here. This is the property next to ours here. Here are units in here, and a small type family in here. They have a big parking area in the middle. Big parking lot behind us here from the school. And then there's a, there's some sort of business going on here next to us over here. We're going to leave as many of these trees in the back for the buffer in the rear, and then we're going to have buffers on the sides on either side. If we did have the one access drive, it would actually allow for more buffer on this side with that neighboring business that's there. To be putting a drive on this side, but we can leave more vegetation or put more plantings on this side to screen us from that neighboring business.
And within the parking area.
That's correct.
For...
I think we're going to be proposing to put a fence up along the side.
Oh, yeah, right, right.
And on the other side as well. But in the rear, we want to leave a lot of those mature trees in the rear for that back corner. We have a nice buffer in the back from these units from that parking area in the rear.
Have fence on both sides of the...
Yeah, we'll put fence on you on both sides here.
Both sides.
There's a lot going on here at 125 Walker. We want to have a full, opaque buffer to that side. We want to have a full, opaque buffer to that side.
Does everybody have copies of the plans of the units?
Are these apartments or condominiums? I'm referring to the...
These will be...
The solid waste people that would determine trash pickup. City cards would be required to be brought down to Walker Street.
Yeah, that's not, we don't want to...
Yeah, that's better, obviously.
Matt, so there are two, two different lots. So then you would be looking for an easement on the center if we were going with a plan like this? And then would it be, you know, Walker Street, Phase One, the development on one side and Phase Two, or they all want to, you know, they're on two separate lots?
So it could be phased, right? Things got a little slow for some reason. I would predict that it's not our intention. But this could be built here. This drive could be constructed, ensuring that this is the full key turnaround for the fire truck.
Right.
This could, the city could provide occupancy for these units.
Right.
And then go into these units here. Similar to what they did on 142 Chestnut Street.
Yeah, yeah.
Built the entire drive, made sure that the fire truck was able to completely turn around, and then they were issuing occupancy permits that they were... We think this is the better of things. When you look at the streetscape, it really becomes evident that the style of unit closer to the road is...
Oh, it's much better than the first plan that was presented. But, so if you didn't subdivide the lot, how many units could you put on there?
If you didn't subdivide the lot, there would only be able to be five, six.
I guess that's where, so you're getting the benefit, you're subdividing it, but yet you're treating it as one lot. I guess that's where it's kind of, it's a little...
Yeah, I mean, like I said, this is fine with us. Two separate lots, two multifamily, just so happens it works out that this is, you know, a large lot.
Right. Yeah, and I mean, to put it in perspective, what 43, a little over 43,000 square feet an acre, and this is just, you know, what, 37,000 square feet? It's amazing how large that lot is.
Yeah, it really is. It's limited to six units per, for this district. And we're, we're completely fine with this scenario here. It's an A&R subdivision.
Right.
And the city would have no responsibility for maintenance of the roadway, there's no removal.
It doesn't have any responsibility for either.
Yeah, that would be documented appropriately.
My question, which do, the comment mentioned that there might need to be more parking spaces than what is available. Do you have a response to the comment on that?
Yeah, so, so the calculation for three to six units says that it's point seven, five spaces per bedroom, or two spaces per unit, whichever is larger. So what ends up happening is we need one extra space here, and we need an extra space, a couple extra spaces here, which we can incorporate into this plan. So we'll be complying with that. If the board's leaning towards the common drive, then we would need to follow up and go to zoning board of appeals for that, for that common access drive. Other than that, with this plan here, we would not be requesting any waivers at all.
I think that's almost like, there's a sweet path analysis to show that a fire truck can turn around, I think.
Yeah, we, we've done that analysis. Yep. We're able to do it while we're designing, which is nice, so we can ensure that we take care of that, that analysis while we're doing the design.
And is there a plan to, to come up with certain landscaping plans, or that...
We will. We'll, we'll provide a landscaping plan and a screening and buffer plan as part of the submittal that we do.
Thank you.
What's the height of the...
So this unit is approximately, I'm sorry. This unit would be...
It says on our notes that the height is to be determined.
Well, we can't go higher...
No, that's right.
We can't go higher than 36 feet?
Thirty-five.
Right, so we'll probably be more like 28, 30 on these.
And there will be a homeowners' association relative to maintenance and trash.
Yep.
Oh, one more question.
Probably want to see that.
Oh, yeah, we can do that, yep. We can provide a draft document for that.
So if, if somehow we're exploring the two driveway option, do you plan to have a fencing in the middle as well?
Not in the middle, no.
Good to know.
Excuse me.
We'd prob, if, if we were to go with the two separate drives, we'd put some trees up along the middle here to provide some landscaping buffer between the two.
But they would both still be part of the same condominium association, or is that, is that what you're looking at?
If, if we do this scenario here, we don't, we wouldn't, we would have two separate condominiums.
Okay, and then that's, I just will say that's more in the spirit of the subdivision than doing the, this is, this is what, this has some merit to me, but to me, it's a, it, it really walks the thin line of still using it as a single lot and getting more units than what the zoning allows, and getting that beneficial use, whereas this is really treating it, if you subdivided it, this is how many units you can get on this lot, that's how many you can get on that lot. So that, that's, but I understand there's some merits to this plan.
Yeah, and I think it's a unique property because you're not going to find this too often down, down the street. A lot of the lots are smaller lots. I think, I don't think this is going to be a continuous thing that you see, this type of scenario. I don't, honestly, I haven't necessarily come in with any of this particular nature in a while.
Because actually, there's, there's several of these, probably not as, well, actually, there's a couple of them. There's one nice one on Walker Street. I took pictures, if you go further, heading towards Pawtucket Street. And they're similar with the housing in the back and units in the front. It is not entirely unique to Walker Street, that I can tell you. It's just that there's not too many of these large lots left. I mean, you could actually farm this lot walking. That was amazing.
No, I just meant in the entire city. I, I just meant, just generally, you don't run across this...
That's right on the street, and these are in the back.
Matt, could you comment on the parking? Traffic engineer's got a, the notes we have, item two may need more parking spaces, and then goes to the analysis.
Yeah, so that...
By 75, but could you just bring us up the date on where you are there?
Yeah, so, so this, this, this lot would need one extra space here. One more space needed on this plan, which, which we can provide that right here.
All right, for the parking.
Yep, and then we can provide a couple more spaces here and here and here on this plan.
Oh, all right, that's just...
And we can provide some spaces here, yeah.
All right. So that requirement would be satisfied.
Like I said, these, well, there's going to be no variances being requested on these.
I want to draw attention to the fire department comment also. I think for the two parking lot options, they, they, they kind of wish to have a full drive-through access. But then that would defeat the purpose of having two driveways. Well, I mean, instead of having just one. I, I wonder if it can be a gravel...
Well, I think that's just something where we'll have to work it out, depending on what the applicant applies for.
Yeah, once we determine what the preferences of the board and DPD, then we'll work on one plan to go forward to the board.
Well, I don't think the board should really have to make a comment on what our preference is. I think it's up to the applicant to come forward. You came forward with three different plans. You received comments on all three different plans. I think it's your decision to come forward instead of us. You come back and say, well, this is the plan you picked. Because as I read earlier in the announcement, we don't make any decisions. So you're asking us to make a decision what plan we like, and I'm not going to give my decision which plan I like. I think that's up to you. You had our comments, people made comments on different things, but I don't think we should have to tell you which project to commit on. Any other board members have any further questions?
I just, Mr. Chairman, I would just say these two options are a lot better than what was presented initially.
I agree with that.
And I think you got the economist's response on its merits, each one of these plans, but just as to, I, I agree with the chairman. We're not in the position...
Yeah, and I understand that, Mr. Linahan. And the nice thing about the way that this is set up, we can easily just take something out and have it, so I'm going to, I'll be coming in with this plan. And then if, if the board then, when we submit, prefers, or DPD prefers this access drive, it's easy for us to just incorporate it in, because it's not necessarily going to change my drainage too much in the other utilities. It's a, it's an easy, that's the nice part about having these very similar configurations next to each other, because we're able to incorporate the, one or the other during the planning board...
The other units would stay the same, so that wouldn't be...
That's right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's just basically the access.
Yeah, in fact, if the fire, if the fire department wanted to sweep around through here, I could even take this out. But I, I do know that, you know, one of the goals we're trying to do is, is to, you know, provide as much on-street parking as we possibly can, which the one, I know I'm repeating myself, which the one access drive does, so...
I, I do want to point out, though, the one driveway version, the townhouses are wider, right? Are they bigger? They're wider, like the townhouses are wider at 24 feet. And then the two-driver version, they're only 20. So they are bigger with the one drive. Well, at least the way that you depict it.
You're absolutely, yeah, that's a good observation, yeah. Generally, they're going to look the same.
But, but to the applicant, is it interchangeable? It seems like you, you're implying that, so I just want to...
Generally, the layout of the units are the same. Yes, the width does change. I didn't notice that, but yes, it does. So, you know, we would just change the width of the units.
Any other further comments? We wish you well. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much for your time.
You're welcome.
Okay, moving along on the agenda. Do we have any further comments from any of the planning board members as a result of other boards that are on our updates? Anything from the staff?
Board, we'll be meeting the second Monday of December. There's nothing outstanding right now, no, very little activity.
What's the date of your staff board meeting?
The ninth of December.
Oh, the second Monday.
Second Monday.
Okay, okay, okay. Got you, I was going to say our meeting is 12, too. Okay, all right. Anything further from staff on notices or anything?
I just wanted to update the board. Because of the three continuances tonight, they're all for the December 2nd, and then we have the 13 Wood Street site plan review. And that's it.
Okay. So we have the three that we continue tonight plus that other site plan that's on. So is that just a plain site plan, any special permit needed, just a site plan, right?
The 13 Wood Street's just site plan review.
Okay, thank you very much. Any further comments? Now we're going to hand a motion to adjourn. We'll move.
Second.
Fall in favor, they are?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Good night, and thank you, everyone. Good night, Matt.
Thank you.